Our Lighthouse Point City Commission meeting of January 8th, 2019. Happy New Year. First meeting of what will hopefully be a very productive and wonderful 2019. We traditionally begin with an invocation, but before we turn it over to Mr. Slavich from Cross United Church, after the invocation, I'd like, if the commissioners are okay, to pause for a moment of silence to recognize Edith Letterberg, who passed away on Sunday night at the age of 89. She was the executive director of the agency, sorry, director of the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Broward County for 30 years. I know I saw actually recognitions from both Commissioner Long and Commissioner Johnson, who I believe knew her.
Very fortunate.
Sorry, condolences. So let's pause for a moment of silence, but with that said, we'll call up Mr. Slavich from Cross United Church, who will begin with invocation.
Father in heaven, you've made and you own all things. Every good gift comes from you, including this new year. The start of this new year brings fresh beginnings and opportunities, and also the carryover of the blessings and struggles of last year and the years before that. Likewise, both new and old opportunities and new and old problems will be brought before this commission, both this evening and this year. Please grant them wisdom, courage, and integrity as they decide, as they discuss. Thank you for each person here and for their investment of their time and their energy to serve the community and to promote the common good of the city of Lighthouse Point. Thank you for the employees of the city and the many civil servants for their work to serve our city in ways both seen and unseen. Please use this evening's proceedings to make our great city an even better place to live and to work, a place of prosperity, justice, and peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
We'll call the meeting in order.
Begin with the pledge of the flag. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Tros.
Here.
Commission President Joffe.
Here.
Commission Vice President Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Long.
Happy New Year.
Commissioner Van Busker.
Here.
City Attorney Cirillo.
Here.
City Administrator Loviski.
Here.
Finance Director DePaulo.
Here.
Fire Chief Gil Martin.
Here.
Library Director Keys.
Here.
Police Chief Licata.
Public Works Director Tram.
Here.
And Recreation Director Lee Floyd Dutton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item on our agenda is the presentation to the firefighter of the year, followed by the police officer of the year, so we'll go with firefighters first tonight, in honor of Commissioner Van Busker, maybe, I guess. We'll call up Chief Gil Martin, too, to make the presentation. He's also first on the agenda.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'm here to present the 2018 Firefighter of the Year Award. This award is given annually to the Lighthouse Point firefighter that demonstrates the exceptional devotion to duty while acting on behalf of the city of Lighthouse Point and the city of Lighthouse Point Fire Department. This year, as the most year, there are several other members of our department that were also deserving of this recognition. I would just like to mention their names before I announce the recipients. They are Nick Palmasano, Mike Brown, Shawn Johnson, Randy Ketter, and Erica Gleason. Each one of them utilizes their time and efforts to improve our fire department and the service we provide to our residents. I can't thank each one of them enough for their positive attitudes and their willingness to make a difference. With that all being said, it gives me great pleasure to announce that the firefighter, Mike Delaraca, has earned the designation as this year's recipient for the Lighthouse Point 2018 Firefighter of the Year. Mike has been with our department now for 12 years. Mike is state certified as a firefighter paramedic, a driver engineer, a fire officer, and a state of Florida and Broward County certified fire inspector. His job as a fire inspector enables him to get out each day and interact with the business and property owners of our community. Mike is accompanied tonight by his wife Natalie and his three young sons, Jude, Jack, and Jase. Would you like to come up, Mike? Got this nice plaque, 2018 Firefighter of the Year, Mike Delaraca.
Get a picture of those cute boys, too, you guys. We got some time. Come on up. Come on, get a good picture. There you go.
Big hug for daddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Officer of the Year, Chief Licata.
Tonight I had the honor and privilege of recognizing Officer Ryan Mulroney, who's been selected as our 2018 Police Officer of the Year. Ryan has been a member of our agency for the last eight years. He's served as a dispatcher and police officer, and has excelled in both positions. During the past year, he has displayed an outstanding work ethic and a constant high level of vigilance, professionalism, and outstanding service to our agency and to the citizens of Lighthouse Point. While Ryan has contributed to our agency's success in many positive ways, the most commendable acts involve his actions that he took to help save the lives of four different Lighthouse Point residents who were in respiratory arrest from an opioid overdose. On four different occasions, Ryan responded to emergency calls for service, was the first officer on scene, and found individuals in dire condition. They were unconscious, not breathing, and unresponsive to physical and verbal stimulation. In some cases, CPR was performed to no avail. Ryan quickly identified the potential problem of a drug overdose, used his recently acquired training that we received from paramedics right here in Lighthouse Point, and took immediate action to administer naloxone, a medication designed to reverse the effects of opioid respiratory distress. In all four cases, those Lighthouse Point residents survived. As you can see, in Lighthouse Point, we're not immune to the devastating effects that the nationwide opioid epidemic is having on our country. According to the Center for Disease Control, this past year alone, 49,000 people in the United States passed away, 12,500 of those from the state of Florida from opioid-related overdoses. Fortunately, due to Ryan's quick intervention, four of our residents are not part of those statistics. In addition, Ryan was recognized for his investigation and processing of a Lighthouse Point residential burglary scene, in which he collected a small amount of blood trace evidence, which ultimately led to a DNA hit on the violent offender out of Fort Lauderdale. The subject, who had been an extensive, had an extensive criminal history for robbery, aggravated assault with a firearm, drug trafficking, and felony domestic violence, was subsequently arrested and charged in the Lighthouse Point case. Ryan also assisted in the investigation of an armed subject who was deemed to be a safety risk, which led to one of the first risk protection orders issued in the state of Florida under the new Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act earlier this year. Ryan serves as a field training officer and has been active in our community service initiatives by participating in and personally donating to our annual Shop with a Cop and Special Olympics tip a cop programs, raising thousands of dollars for our families and children locally here. He's a true team player with an exceptional attitude and a willingness to go out of his way to help others and accomplish our department mission, and those are the reasons why we selected Ryan as our Officer of the Year. Before I bring him up to make this presentation, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly recognize our entire staff at the police department, our police officers, our dispatchers, our civilians, and volunteers, for the exceptional job that they do and for the contributions that they have made to help make Lighthouse Point one of the safest communities and most desirable places to live here in Broward County. With their help, our city experienced a 22% drop in Part 1 crimes this year, which is the lowest level of Part 1 crimes ever reported in Lighthouse Point, and a 39% clearance rate, which is near the highest we've ever achieved. So with that, let's thank you, and Ryan Mulroney. We also have his wife, Mary, and Aubrey, and Abigail, his two daughters. We'd like to take a little family picture.
Thank you. Thank you. Police Officer of the Year, Chief Licata.
Good evening, Mayor Tros, commissioners, and distinguished guests here with us tonight. Tonight I had the honor and privilege of recognizing Officer Ryan Mulroney, who's been selected as our 2018 Police Officer of the Year. Ryan has been a member of our agency for the last eight years. He's served as a dispatcher and police officer, and has excelled in both positions. During the past year, he has displayed an outstanding work ethic and a constant high level of vigilance, professionalism, and outstanding service to our agency and to the citizens of Lighthouse Point. While Ryan has contributed to our agency's success in many positive ways, the most commendable acts involve his actions that he took to help save the lives of four different Lighthouse Point residents who were in respiratory arrest from an opioid overdose. On four different occasions, Ryan responded to emergency calls for service, was the first officer on scene, and found individuals in dire condition. They were unconscious, not breathing, and unresponsive to physical and verbal stimulation. In some cases, CPR was performed to no avail. Ryan quickly identified the potential problem of a drug overdose, used his recently acquired training that we received from paramedics right here in Lighthouse Point, and took immediate action to administer naloxone, a medication designed to reverse the effects of opioid respiratory distress. In all four cases, those Lighthouse Point residents survived. As you can see, in Lighthouse Point, we're not immune to the devastating effects that the nationwide opioid epidemic is having on our country. According to the Center for Disease Control, this past year alone, 49,000 people in the United States passed away, 12,500 of those from the state of Florida from opioid-related overdoses. Fortunately, due to Ryan's quick intervention, four of our residents are not part of those statistics. In addition, Ryan was recognized for his investigation and processing of a Lighthouse Point residential burglary scene, in which he collected a small amount of blood trace evidence, which ultimately led to a DNA hit on the violent offender out of Fort Lauderdale. The subject, who had been an extensive, had an extensive criminal history for robbery, aggravated assault with a firearm, drug trafficking, and felony domestic violence, was subsequently arrested and charged in the Lighthouse Point case. Ryan also assisted in the investigation of an armed subject who was deemed to be a safety risk, which led to one of the first risk protection orders issued in the state of Florida under the new Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act earlier this year. Ryan serves as a field training officer and has been active in our community service initiatives by participating in and personally donating to our annual Shop with a Cop and Special Olympics tip a cop programs, raising thousands of dollars for our families and children locally here. He's a true team player with an exceptional attitude and a willingness to go out of his way to help others and accomplish our department's mission, and those are the reasons why we selected Ryan as our Officer of the Year. And before I bring him up to make this presentation, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly recognize our entire staff at the police department, our police officers, our dispatchers, our civilians, and volunteers, for the exceptional job that they do and for the contributions that they have made to help make Lighthouse Point one of the safest communities and most desirable places to live here in Broward County. With their help, our city experienced a 22% drop in Part 1 crimes this year, which is the lowest level of Part 1 crimes ever reported in Lighthouse Point, and a 39% clearance rate, which is near the highest we've ever achieved. So with that, let's thank you, and Ryan Mulroney. We also have his wife, Mary, and Aubrey, and Abigail, his two daughters. We'd like to take a little family picture.
Thank you. I like how it is. How it is. I thought Mike had a good teeth. It's like a, oh, I know. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation by Mayor Tros, in honor of Arbor Day. Wait, yeah. Wait a minute. Arbor Day is every day, Commissioner Joffe. Are you kicking his four-legged hand or his hands on here? The top of my hands. Oh, I know. Good job. I didn't understand what you were saying. Yeah, a little contact, too. Well, I do, but I had to take something. Andrew Wilgant gave me a gift the other day, a battery, so in order to get that through, I gotta get the contacts out so I can actually sit. Good. I'm good.
Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas 2019 is the 147th anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Lighthouse Point will hereafter observe Arbor Day annually on the third Friday in January in conjunction with Florida Arbor Day. Now therefore, I, Glenn Tros, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Lighthouse Point, do hereby proclaim January 18th, 2019, as the 147th anniversary celebration of Arbor Day in the city of Lighthouse Point, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tros. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minutes of December 11th, 2018. Commissioners, if you had a chance to review. I have one question, but I can go last, if anybody has anything. My question was, and maybe it's just because we've been on break and I haven't looked at minutes in a month and a half, but when we do a motion to read, and I know this is kind of nitpicky, but when we do a motion to read, and it's a motion, and it's seconded, and then it's read, the minutes reflected it was carried unanimously. Do we always, have we always reflected our minutes like that, without objection? Okay. All right. I just noticed that. Having had that comment and resolved, I would make a motion to approve the minutes. Second. We have a motion, we have a second for the approval of the regular minutes of December 11th, 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. That motion carries. All have voted, all commissioners?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Treasurers report, Finance Director DePaulo.
Good evening. General Fund has $3,428,858.74. Cleanup deposits, $31,400.01. Garbage and trash fund, $17,724,911.50. Special Purpose Funds, $2,986,324.68. Stormwater Utility Fund, $660,300,088.90. Debt Service Fund, $337,202.41. Contingency, $5,483,748.01. General Fund and Conferences, $348,392.35. Total all funds, $14,615,146.58.
Any questions for Finance Director DePaulo?
Just one. I always ask this. When does our check start rolling in from the county for our taxes? They have rolled in.
That's why we have some money.
That's why we have some money. But I mean, over the time period, I know we only get, I guess my question was, you usually get, what, like 60% by November, December, and then we kind of roll into the end of March, but it's more my question.
Yeah, we usually get, we've gotten probably, say, about 80, 85% of our receipts already.
That's great.
Yeah, and then we'll get significant little more amounts for the next month and a half, two months, and then it'll sort of dwindle off that.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Thank you. Next item is public comment and requests regarding agenda items. There are two items on our agenda tonight. One regarding a purchase of a cardiac monitor defibrillator and an ordinance amending our municipal pension fund, so we would like to address the commission regarding either of those two items. Come up. You'll have, state your name and your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. Everybody's okay with your defibrillator, okay? That's usually good. We'll close public comment. No reports from city administration. There are no department reports, but I looked on the department report. Can we get an update? It's going to become like a bailwinder mine on the dredging, do we? I know last I heard the lawyers were making a.
It's still pumping up.
Can we, can we, like, what's the deal?
Well, part of the deal was the delay from the holidays. It got to them in the middle of December. It got to their staff. I think Chuck can give you the specifics, but it got to his counterparts in Pompano Beach. He checked on it, I think, as recently as late last week, and they said they were going to get back to them. So the legal, I don't even know if it's been moved up to Pompano Beach legal yet. I've reviewed it, and I've given checks and comments that hopefully are acceptable to their legal. Not significant, but some of the final comments that they got from their staff regarding, I guess, their ability, our ability to address odors that come from the site was the last item that I've been working on, but maybe you can.
Chuck, anything else? I know, the ball's not in your court, I know.
Well, that's correct. I can corroborate what City Attorney Cirillo says, and we modified some of our attachments, and it was sent over, and we're waiting to hear back.
Okay. Is there any ideas on how to expedite this? Has this gone on, like a.
Well, I would ask, reach out to Rex, maybe?
Mayor Hart?
It's not a Rex issue. It's an issue with staff, and it's quite honestly, the city attorney in Pompano dealing with it, but we don't have some resolution by next week. I am going to reach out to Rex and see if he can put some pressure on it.
Fair enough. Thanks, Chuck, appreciate it. No reports from the city, anything else on the department, for the permanence? No reports from the city attorney, no standing committee reports. Our next meeting, board meetings are planning in zoning February 5th, 2019, code enforcement January 15th, 2019, committee appearance January 17th, 2019, special magistrate January 9th, 2019, and marine advisory board is meeting February 7th, 2019. There is no unfinished business. The first item of new business is waive the bid process to purchase LifePak 15 12-lead cardiac monitor defibrillator. Chief Gil Martin.
Good evening. We're asking to waive the bid process to purchase a LifePak 15 12-lead cardiac monitor defibrillator from Physio Control, who's a sole source provider of the equipment. The background on this is that currently on Engine 22, we're using a LifePak 12, which is almost 14 years old, and the other LifePaks, we're going to rotate them around and put the new LifePak on the new rescue truck. It's part of a planned, you know, to replace it. It's a planned replacement already. It's the same, it's the same defibrillator that we use on the rescue truck. We have the 15 that's going to enable us to have the same batteries, same pads, same, all the stuff that we need, all the.
Accessories.
All the accessories that we need for it. It's all going to be the same now, instead of having different stuff for each truck. All the buttons the same, all the, you know, all the equipment's the same, so in emergency, everything's just the same for everybody. The fire button, we're going to put it on the Rescue 22, and like I said, swap them around so that it gets more use, and that's the other one. We're buying it through a NASCO bidding contract, which was a state bidding contract that they bid through Oklahoma, then it's accepted by the state of Florida to have us, so we have something to bid off, we have something to reference off. So it's a national bid that allows us to buy this. You see the attached and sales code from Physio Control, sole force letter, state of Florida purchasing documents, and the national pricing agreement from Oklahoma side, we statewide contract SWO300. The total cost of the LifePak 15 is going to be $34,496.90, which includes a $5,000 trade-in that they're going to allow us for our LifePak 12, and a four-year service plan for onsite service repairs and preventative maintenance, troubleshooting. It was planned in our budget to purchase this, and I recommend that the city commission waive the bid process and offer us to purchase a new LifePak 15 cardiac monitor defibrillator with the four-year service agreement from Physio Control. Accept the amount of $5,000 for the LifePak 12 as a trade-in allowance for a final cost of $34,496.90.
Thanks, Chief Commissioner. Just a reminder, it's got to be unanimous to be waiving bid, but you have a question? I do. Certainly not opposed to it, just wondering, sole source in the entire United States? There's only one place these can be purchased? They go out for a national bid, and there's only one place that makes these acceptable? That's amazing.
They have, they have different, they have different, they have different, like, they have different monitors and things like that, but this is the same ones that we have. It's the same ones that use throughout Broward County, all throughout South Florida.
Right.
It's just the standard that everybody uses and.
I'm certainly not opposed to it, it just amazes me that there's a single source. It sounds like somebody.
We, you know, we were able to get the price down. We barged, we cut out some of the things by being able to have the same batteries and chargers and stuff, we were able to cut out the stuff. We originally got a budget around $45,000 for it, and we were able to get the price and stuff down to about $35,000.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to it, it just amazes me that the whole national scene, there's one source available, but I'm not opposed to it, certainly. Any else, commissioners?
I'll make a motion to waive the bid process to purchase LifePak 15 12-lead cardiac monitor defibrillator at a price of $34,496.90, which includes a trade-in of $5,000 for, $5,000 credit with the LifePak 12 that we currently own.
I'll second that. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you. 5-0. Thank you, chief. Hopefully you never have to use it.
Unfortunately, it gets used quite a bit.
Ordinance is, first reading of an ordinance amending the Florida Municipal Trust Fund Defined Benefit Plan and Trust for Police Officers and Firefighters. City Attorney Cirillo.
Mr. President, members of the city commission, the collective bargain agreements with the Broward County Police Network Association and Metro Broward Firefighter Focal 3080 have been ratified by labor unions and approved by the city commission. One item agreed upon by the parties was that non-vested participants who cease to participate in the current focal plan but remain actively employed with the city may receive a refund of a participant's contribution to the plan in order for us to adopt the modified plan to reflect the bargain change. There was a modification to the language that was originally in the agenda. It has been distributed on the day of the proceeding, the day of this evening. It does reflect a change that says that the refund of the participant's contributions to the plan will be with interest at 5% compounded monthly, either as a direct payment or as a rollover. This is already in the benefits. This is not a change to the terms. This is just to put the language in this modification, since it's already been agreed upon. And if you approve the ordinance this evening, it will be the revised language that was distributed this evening that is going to be approved.
Got a question? Does he have a motion to read? Motion to read first. Okay. Motion to read. Second.
In order to the city commission, city of Lighthouse Point, providing for modifications for Florida Municipal Trust Fund Defined Benefit Plan and Trust for the police officers and firefighters of the city of Lighthouse Point, adoption agreement providing for complex vulnerability and effective date.
Yeah. Just I read this, and I asked Glenn, do you count over here? Because I read it as an interest of 5% compounded monthly, and it should be the, I would think that it'd sound better if it was the annual rate of 5% compounded monthly. I wouldn't want people to think you're getting 5%.
The rest of the contract is at 5% annually, but I see what you're saying. So Mike, what, after the word "at," we're going to insert "at," and after the word "at," it's going to say an annual rate of five, and so then we'll say 5%, comma, compounded monthly, comma, to make it abundantly clear.
That work for people?
Nick, any issues?
I've got no issues with that.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? Thank you, Commissioner Long. If there are no other questions or comments, I would offer a motion to approve ordinance 2019-0970, providing for the modifications. As a man, as a man, just have a motion. We have a motion, we have a second on ordinance 2019-0970. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to the end of our jam-packed agenda. I think these residents, uh, deserve an opportunity to be heard, I think they deserve an opportunity to hear from the fire chief, I think they deserve an opportunity for us to at least put it on an upcoming agenda and have a discussion and let them speak to it. There are some vendors that have talked to me that tell me that there are new technologies that, uh, make it much safer. Uh, the popularity, as I said, uh, bigger boats going to gasoline engines because of the fin, efficiencies and maintenance, uh, so we can debate all that, but what I'm hoping to do is get this on an agenda, so give those residents and those folks that either are in favor or opposed, an opportunity to talk about it and learn if we are against it, why we are against it, they deserve to know that. So I would like to propose that we put that on the budget, if I can get everybody's agreement...
On the agenda.
I'm sorry, on the, on the upcoming agenda at some point, so we can have that dialogue.
Mr. Long? Didn't we just do this like last year and a couple years before that? I mean, are we just beating a dead horse again?
I've been on the commission for six years, and I don't remember it ever coming...
Oh, we've had this a few times.
Not, not where we've had an open discussion with residents.
We've had the fleet, or the fire chiefs come in, you know, uh, when Dave Gonzella was here, we've had studies presented to us, and we, we have fire concerns, I don't know what new technologies are out there, but, you know, it just seems to keep coming up every couple years and, and nothing changes. We're a small city.
Well, we're a small city, and we have residents that deserve to hear what our thinking is, and I've been requested by...
And that's my point, I think, God, we've said this how many times?
I don't think it hurts us to have another discussion, put it on the agenda, and let's talk about it.
I, I think, you know, if you wanna put it on the agenda, you can, but we, we were told adamantly the last time this came up by the fire chief, who we consider our expert in this field, that it was not safe, and he was very uncomfortable with it happening in our city, and just because Pompano and Deerfield do it, they like to park boats in the driveway too, you know, so we can't do it just 'cause they do. And we live, I myself personally listened to him because I felt like he was way more an expert than myself, so...
I absolutely agree.
I'm just throwing that in because that's the way I heard it. We could go back to the minutes and see when that occurred, but it certainly was within the last...
I, I absolutely agree, uh, that the fire chief has brought that up, but I think our residents deserve more than just, I'm uncomfortable with it, I think they deserve a, a little more discussion. What's it gonna hurt to let the residents come in and put it on the, uh, on the agenda and have a discussion? That's all I'm suggesting, whether we say yea or nay, let's at least, if there are new technologies, let's hear what they are. Let's give the residents a chance to be heard.
Should, should we look to see the last time this, this was addressed?
It's been, it's been within the last two or three years, I remember, uh, Chief, former Chief Gonzella, uh, giving a presentation, um, back when I was on the commission, we did this a couple times, uh, since I've been there, we've done it at least once, possibly twice, so, uh...
The one thing that has happened that is relatively new, from what I understand, is you're seeing more and more outboard engines going on boats thirty feet and, and larger.
I, I agree.
And you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars in fuel delivery and costs, whereas our residents are going to Pompano and parking their dock, their boats there to get fuel, because it, it saves a lot of money, so at least it deserves a dialogue.
But that's, that's an economic hardship for the owner of the boat, I'm asking, what's the new technology, you got any info on that? Kind of leave it to, to make it different than what we talked about last...
I was approached by a vendor who, who lives in this city, who tells me that the firefighting and technology equipment now that they use on the, the trucks that deliver the barges and so forth is advanced from what it was just a few years ago, this is what I'm told. I, I'm not an expert.
The question is a discussion, and if we need to hear it again, I, I don't know, I don't recall, quite frankly, admittedly, I've been up here three and a half years having a discussion about it, and it's gonna be perfectly honest, I know it came up during the last election, I do remember that, so maybe that's what everybody's thinking, but I thought... As much as we, as much as, maybe, I don't remember that, but as much as I wanna forget that, um, I, I don't know, I mean, if I only knew an expert on the topic, um...
I, I just, well, you said something, Commissioner Marker said something that just kinda struck me, we're, when I think of fuel delivery that currently comes in our city, we currently utilize, uh, vehicles to bring it in, and then we discussing barges, um, coming in, I, I consider myself somewhat of a subject matter expert on it, I work in one of the largest fuel terminals in the United States of America in Fort Everglades, and deal with this on a daily basis, and I could tell you, from my perspective, gasoline and diesel are totally two different animals. They bring in different chemical properties, they, they bring in so many different avenues, permeability, hazards, even if you look at a regular standardized placard on the side of NFPA seven oh four placarding, they actually get different markings for their flammability and combustibility and actually their reactivity. So to me, it's one of those things that, you know what, we are a small city, we have a limited amount of resources for what we have for our fire department, we run on, I would consider it a skeleton crew, we don't even run three-person rescue like majority of our surrounding cities do, and we have discussed this before, and I was at the mayoral collection, or mayoral talk, and also in the commissioners, previously when Commissioner Joffe was running, uh, there was, on the debate, I remember them discussing fuel delivery. And I think we just continuously recycle the same thing and hope that it comes back around. I understand the point of, hey, listen, there's bigger boats that are taking on gasoline, and they're going to Pompano, well, I mean, that's, that's a decision that they have to make for themselves. For me personally, ultimately in the end, it comes down to safety and what's best for our residents. For the minority group, and I mean that wholeheartedly, although yes, when we do go through these opportunities, there are, seems like a vocal majority, but in reality, if you think about it, less than fifty percent of our community is on the water. And then we start breaking that down versus diesel boats and versus gasoline boats, and then you break it down, or how much gasoline these people are gonna take, and are they actually coming in to fueling? I mean, that's a lot, and all of a sudden, it takes just one hose and the flammability difference, and I'll just give you a thing, there's a difference, and they call it combustibility and flammable liquids, two different things, it's NFPA and ocean standard. Gasoline is a flammable liquid, that means its ignition temperature is less than a hundred degrees Fahrenheit, meaning at room temperature in South Florida, it's ready to ignite if it has a spark. Then you go to diesel, diesel is two hundred and forty-seven degrees. Ultimately, yeah, two hundred and forty-seven, my, I, numbers might be off, but they're, but the idea is that that's why diesel engines have to be compressed, and there has to be a whole different thing. At, at room, at room temperature in Florida, you could basically throw a road flare into a pile of diesel, and more likely, it's never gonna ignite, 'cause it's gonna be put out because it doesn't have the combustible vapors. Then we get into specific gravity and some vapor densities and all these sort of things, and now we're again, like I said, we're getting through this whole thing again for a very small group of folks, and I'm not disagreeing with, maybe it could be cheaper, I don't, I don't know personally, but again, the safety of all of our residents, like we always talk about, the larger group of our residents in the city, is that we don't do it, and if they need to go to Pompano, then they go to Pompano, they wanna go to Deerfield, go to Deerfield to get the fuel. That's just my personal opinion on it, I just feel like, hey...
But what about, so Mayor, I mean, you're, it's your depart-, I mean, you know, you're, what do you think about a discussion? I get all that, it's very technical, I, I think, I know your position, but the discussion side is what's been requested by Commissioner Marker, that's what, we're not gonna decide this tonight.
We're not gonna decide it tonight, my suggestion would be, is if there are new technologies, Mayor Commissioner Marker arranges for those to get to the fire chief, um, the fire chief can then advise John and myself what his findings are, we can report back to the commission of what we found, and then if the commission wants to put it on an agenda for a full discussion among all the commissioners, we can do that if we want to. Um, the other choice is, um, the commission makes a decision, they wanna put this on a future agenda, we still need to get the same information, um, and, uh, but it's, you know, you gotta have a consensus whether or not we wanna have a discussion or not have a discussion on it. Um, you know, Kyle raises an important point, um, the flammability, and, uh, I get that, you know, we only have six people on a crew, and, uh, you get a hundred gallon gasoline spill, and it goes whoosh, that's gonna be tough to fight, and Kyle, flammability of gasoline's what, fifty-four, fifty-five degrees, I think?
It's actually negative forty-seven degrees.
There you go.
Oh, you guys, come on.
Listen, ultimately, yeah, I think that, if we're gonna be doing research, I, I think, like Commissioner Marker with the new technology and stuff, and I see the new technology come through the port, because where they get the, where they get the fuel is basically considered my yard. So in my yard is where they collect this fuel, and I see the truck driver, and I see all this stuff, and, and, listen, uh, we'll have to decide that, I just, I don't see the new technology out there, like, me and I, I just did it today, we just had a full-scale drill and, you know...
And I don't see the shift, and I'm always, I just don't see the shift in our, how our fire department's changed since we have at least, I've been, what I've heard all along is we, we're small, we don't have the capabilities to handle these type of fires, and my concern in my reservation is that any, allowing this in the city does, does increase risk. How much risk is something that we could debate and discuss, but it does increase risk, but if there's new stuff out there, and we're gonna get a report on it from administration, Michael, you know, we're gonna get a report, so...
Well, again, you know, I'll link it to the commission, if the consensus of the commission is we wanna put it on a future agenda, we'll, we'll, we'll schedule it in, you know, the next couple months, if not, um, if that's not the consensus of the commission, now...
We've done it a few times before, and we'd have to do it again, it's, I'll leave it up to that. Let me try, let me try a different context. We just went out and asked our residents to approve a bond issue, and during that bond issue, this was one of the discussions that came up, is like, we want you to approve a new fire station. Now, I understand a new fire station doesn't mean we can have fuel delivery and all bets are off, I understand that, but I was at the fishing club making a presentation, and they approached me and said, "We want to help the city, but we would like the city to help us, and at least have a discussion about fuel delivery." So I'm gonna go back to the fishing club and say, "They don't even wanna talk about it, so we can't bring it up." I don't think that's right at all, I think they deserve to have an opportunity to have this on an agenda where we can discuss it, and if the commission decides, and the chief, and everybody doesn't wanna do it, for all the technical reasons you raised, which are all good reasons, but to say we're not even gonna talk about it, we're not even gonna put it on an agenda, I think is really unfair to the residents that have an interest in this topic.
I think one big concern though is that we have talked about it, and we've had people come up here, and my concern, and it was something that was brought up last time, about you're calling new technology, they're talking about that they have the wherewithal to actually handle a fire or leak, and at the time, it was kinda brought out that, no, most of these people aren't anybody different than a truck driver who just learned how to pump some gas. That's when most of the conversation was dealing with the street delivery...
I'll, I'll legitimate issues, I don't...
So, you know, that's my concern, it's always been a concern of the safety with our, our staffing and, and how we handle a fire, how we can get back to the fire, we don't have a fire boat that we can, you know, easily bring in, um, these are things that, in, in my mind, have not changed, 'cause no one's...
Then why not let the residents hear the discussion?
But we've had the discussion, that's my only frustration, is we keep going up and regurgitating stuff, we go in year after year after year, and, you know, if there's new information, then sure, I'm more than happy to talk about it, but...
Let's, let's just see, Glenn said that he would look into, or, and they would look into in the next few weeks, like Sean, some new technology, let them look into it and see what type of new technology there is, and make a report to us, and at that time, at our next meeting, or maybe two meetings if they need a little time, we can bring it up again and decide then if we wanna get it started again, but if there's no, absolutely nothing new, I don't see us doing it, but on the other hand, if, you know, if it makes people happy, happy, I mean, they could come and talk to us anytime at the part in the, of the public comments and requests from the floor, you know, but if, if the new technology is, let us start there, and then we'll bring it up again, you know, you still feel strongly that we should put it on the agenda, then let's put it on the agenda, but let's just look at the new technology first.
And Earl...
Just delay it, a few, a few weeks isn't gonna make that big a difference.
Yeah, and Earl, since the vendor had approached you about these new technologies, if you'd asked that particular vendor to get us some of that information, so the fire chief can look at it, that would be very helpful as well.
I can do that.
I mean, so, so I guess the...
We're gonna be having the same debate though, I mean, we're gonna get this report, we're gonna have the same debate about whether to put it on the agenda, so I'm just kinda like, quite frankly, let's get the report, put it on agenda, I hear a lot of strong opinions, and we're gonna get the report, right? So what's the consensus of the commissioner?
Look at the report, talk about, we can talk, after, if we wanna put it on the agenda, discuss, I, in a formal thing, let's do that.
I don't know why we need to make this such a bureaucratic nightmare.
Sorry for interrupting, but sometimes, you know, this gets started, and then you, you're pitting neighbors versus neighbors, and it just blows up into something a lot bigger than it needs to be, because people are made promises, oh, we're gonna get this fixed, we're gonna do this, we're not gonna do this, we're not, you know, we talk about this so many times, and it's like, I'm waiting for new information, I never get new information, it's the same thing, the same danger, and God forbid, somebody's house and three, three houses on a boat go up because of a gas spill, or gets in the sewers, or, or stormwater, or, you know, it's just, God, I've got so much to lose on this, and, you know, for the sake of dialogue, let's just get a report first, then do it.
So is there, is there, Commissioner Mayor Moskowitz, is there at least, there's, I hear at least the consensus to get a report from city administration at the next available opportunity about new technologies?
But isn't that just as much as putting it on the agenda? I'm sorry, I, I mean, I'm just, I mean, to Earl's point, like, if we're gonna get a report, in the report, I mean, just, it's, it's there, right?
And then, if, if it's on the agenda, residents who have an interest can be here to hear the discussion, and then it's done.
So, so give us a few weeks, we'll do some research, and, you know, just, commission needs to tell us, do they want it on the agenda, or do they just want the report? It's either one, I'm willing to do.
I, I'm hearing at least enough to put it on the agenda, I don't think it's gonna make, frankly, from what I'm hearing, some strong, strong opinions, I don't think it's gonna change things unless there is some...
And all we can do is have the chief, and I can...
Yeah, I wanna hear from the chief.
I mean, have, have them appear when it's on the agenda and make their report, and anybody that's interested, residents can come and make a discussion, because now it's on the agenda. The problem with, you know, somebody coming up just as a citizen and bringing it up, we're, we're not gonna have a full discussion, it'll just be brought up, we all nod our head, and that's the end of it. If it's on the agenda, we can have a legitimate discussion, that's all I'm suggesting. I'm not asking people to vote in favor, I'm just saying, let's have a dialogue, so...
What, what's our consensus, what are we gonna do?
Is there a consensus to have on the agenda, consensus of the commission?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, someone...
Not for me, but...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm personally ready for it, just to be over for it, but...
I mean, to me, it's, it's the fact-based information that we're looking for, it's not subjective, you know, do we put a batting cage to the left or to the right, you know, to me, it's the fact...
I'm not getting clear, I am admittedly not getting clear directions from the commission.
Then, yes, for a motion.
The chair will entertain a motion.
Then I would offer a motion that we put a discussion of fuel delivery, gasoline specifically, fuel delivery, dockside, uh, on our, on an upcoming agenda, uh, allowing us to get a report from city staff and allowing residents to speak to the issue.
Is there a second? Is there a second? And I'm not, I, I haven't, I, I wanna hear, okay, I'm not gonna second that motion, but I wanna make a motion, so unless I don't hear a second, the motion fails for lack of second. Going once, going twice? Fails, lack of second. Does anybody else wanna make a motion?
For the more limited report?
Well, then I will at least do that, I would make a motion that we ask the fire chief to come forward with a report to the city commission on his concerns, or if he's has limited concerns, to hear his thoughts on fuel delivery, gasoline specifically, to the docks in Lighthouse Point.
Is there a second on that motion? I thought I heard it, is there a consensus on that?
And that's including the information that we'll be finding out in the next couple weeks.
Yeah, the new, I believe...
I would ask this particular vendor that lives in Lighthouse Point to discuss this with the, with fire chief.
And I'm happy to sit down with whoever this vendor is, and the chief as well, I'm sure John would be interested in that.
It's a motion for a report, I believe.
Yes.
So is there a second for that?
I'll second that, 'cause I'd like to hear your report.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three two, we'll get a report from city administration at the next meeting on the issues.
We'll likely not be at the next meeting, but, because, I don't know how many weeks it's gonna take to pull, to digest all this stuff, we don't know what the information is, but as quickly as possible, if that's okay.
As quickly as possible.
Okay. As quickly as possible.
Any other public comments or requests from the floor?
I think we're already past that. I brought that up.
That was so hard.
I heard you, that threw you off, I understand.
I have one more.
Yes, go ahead.
It's just, I just wanted to piggyback on, on your mentioning of Edith Litterberger, Litterberg, that just passed away, uh, she was a giant in our community, for those of For those of you that don't know her, she was the most passionate advocate of the elderly and senior people, senior people and disadvantaged, physically disadvantaged people you could ever imagine, and she was like the Energizer Bunny, and she was 89 years old, and I can't believe she's gone because we never thought she would, because she never stopped, and she just got everything done, and she helped immensely many citizens in this town through me and through her board. She was the president of the, I always get the things, just transportation for the disadvantaged local coordinating board. So she was, helped be responsible for moving the physically disadvantaged people around in buses and vans, and she's just a wonderful person. And I, when I heard yesterday she had passed away, it made me think of Hamilton, which is, you know, the big deal in town these days, and the last song in Hamilton is, Who Lives, Who Dies, Who Tells Your Story? And this is a woman whose story will be told forever in the annals of Broward County, so say a prayer for her tonight. She's up in heaven, probably getting things organized up there and getting trolleys or buses or whatever, but she's a wonderful lady, and God bless her.
Commissioner Long? If I could piggyback on that as well, I think 30 years ago, I bought a house in Lighthouse Point, I asked Frankie Dunne how to get involved, and he says, okay, we're looking at this group called Area Agency on Aging, whether we should fund them or not for their fair share. So they put an old person, a middle-aged person, a young person. Believe it or not, I was the young person.
Really? What time?
I was the puppy. It was like 30 years ago. And Edith came in to get recorded and, you know, really talked about the services that she was providing with, you know, the agency, Area Agency on Aging. And each year, we'd get a report saying that we, that the agency served X amount of people in Lighthouse Point. Like, wow, you know, we're such a well-done city, and that you just talk about it and realize that those numbers were probably even low. And from that point forward, we recommended funding, and we've continued to fund it to this day. And my joke with Edith was always like, hold on to your wallet, because you couldn't say no to her. She'd come asking for money, and I know Sam Gordon, and, you know, I know you guys have worked with her in fashion, just an icon of, you know, the elderly, and now that I'm working my way towards that, we're going to miss her. But she's done amazing work, and it's one of those people, a lot of people didn't know who she was, but the ones who did really admired her and really believed in what she was doing. So, and on another note, let's not forget the movie in the park this Friday. Sorry, stole my note. Incredibles 2. Incredibles 2.
It's incredible.
It was going to be chilly.
I was just going to remind everybody that they started basketball season for the city yesterday. They're doing a really nice job doing the tryouts. It's been a breath of fresh air, I think, for the amount of people and the kids we have out there. We have a second and third grade league, we have a third and fourth grade league, we have a kindergarten and first grade league. It's an amazing amount of kids that are out there, and how really organized it Becky and Adrian and Josie have made, how they made it so easy and flowing yesterday, getting all the coaches out there. I'll tell you what, what a, what a well-run machine yesterday, and I really do appreciate that, you know, we've done a great job with that. So, and I want to thank the mayor for making sure that Becky's been having some of those resources, which also included, as of last commission meeting, we actually got new covers for the dugouts, and we're much appreciated. So, yeah, so there's no more raindrops falling on your head, and I just want to thank them again, and I'll tell you what, that was, we were able to get it done, and it's going to help with the baseball season and everything coming up, so thank you.
I have one last question while we're all gathered here together. Do any of you get notices from the Pompano Lighthouse Point Margate Chamber anymore of anything that are going on or anything?
I think I got email.
I get it, I get an email, but you've got to be careful, a lot of times they end up in the spam filter. You get a little constant contact.
Because I've never heard anything from them anymore.
Yeah. I cleaned out three of them this morning that went back the last couple of weeks. Jeanne McIntyre's new head of chamber there.
I think I've been getting them.
Yeah, I think I got Taste of Lighthouse Point. You took that, too? Go ahead, Mike. I didn't get my tickets yet, so. Taste of Lighthouse Point is Tuesday the 15th. Tickets are available, $50 in advance or $60 at the door. Last year, it was very, very well-attended, and word has it, they're quickly selling out of tickets, so if you want some, you can let me know, and I can get them through the